The Planning Commission meeting for January 25th, 2023. Everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Christopher Daggy.
Here.
Chris Hiltunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Absent, excused.
Robert Muesling, here. Robert Jacobs.
Here.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Here. Item number four, approval amendments to the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yep.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes. Item number five, approval of minutes. For December 7th of 2022. Make motion to approve them.
Support.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes, thank you. Item number six is new business, and we have three items. Six A is the 1721 North Channel. Steve?
Good evening. This request is to put a coffee shop with a drive-through on the island directly across from the ferry. The, it is allowed under special land use approval. We've preliminary reviewed the site plan and provided you our comments, but at this point, what we need to do is schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Existing location, existing building, right? It's all existing.
Yes.
So there's, so they have to go in and meet ordinances?
Yeah, they'll be the new ordinance, I mean, new standards, current standards, I should say.
Once approved.
Yes.
I'd motion to set a public hearing for the February...
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Planning Commission meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent, excused. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes, thank you. Public hearing will be set for February 22nd. Item 6B, which is 5981 Point Trumbull.
Township administration has forwarded to the Planning Commission a proposed restroom and some additional parking spaces for Pearl Beach Pier. It is submitted as part of your package. It's a very simple request. It meets the ordinance and recommending approval.
Any questions, discussion?
I've got a couple of questions.
Yep, go right ahead.
The existing parking lot, is there any improvements that's around the restroom? Is that going to be improved upon?
I am not certain. I have not been apprised of the project. I was just asked to bring this for you tonight for the restrooms. Wish I could answer those, maybe Gary could, if he knows.
Yeah, it looks like the parking and leisure that handicap out by the building will be a paved surface, and then there'll be a walkway from that food service to the bathhouse. So those could be some...
But that existing property that's around the bathhouse, there's no, no plan, just kind of keep it the same way?
Yeah, pretty much what's stone right now will remain stone, except we're required to get ADA compliances accessible.
The road, is that, is that public all the way down, or is that...
There, there's some...
Currently.
It's an interesting lot, because some of it is actually a county roadway that they're not willing to give up at this point, so they still have control of that area. The area that we're proposing to build on, all that area is by county law.
So just the bathrooms, but the other site, the site plan does show improvements to the road, though?
Anything on the roadway side, I'm not 100% sure of, but I know that the areas where ADA, handicap parking, all that's going to be serviced.
So we're just here for the bathrooms, then, not the roadway? That they showing improvements on the roadway, too?
No, not the ba, not the roadway, at all.
Okay, that's part of the site plan?
Yeah, it's just shown for access purposes.
None of that's hard tied together, it's just the bathrooms?
Not to my knowledge, you're correct.
So just the bathrooms, we think that would be, I would assume there's going to be some storm sewer work around that area, too?
I will assume this would go to the township engineer to review that. Yeah.
But we're just here for the bathrooms, then, too?
To concur with the location.
Just the location of the bathroom.
So just to kind of piggyback on Chris's comments, don't we typically get comments from, like, department heads on for site plan review? Does that usually go to them as well?
I believe it does, but I don't know if this, I wasn't asked to review this. I was just, I mean, I was asked very generally if it meets the ordinance in terms of setbacks and that.
Okay.
And I did that, but I don't know if there's been a formal review undertaken by the department heads or not on this.
We require that from everybody else that comes to us, right?
Yeah.
I just, I think Chris brings up some good points about utilities and drainage and stuff like that, that might be, might be caught by some of the department heads that may want to look at it, so. I hate to do it, but I think we need to, I think we need to get, we need to follow the procedure for site plan review.
You table, and I can get the information for you if you want.
Do we know why it didn't go through that procedure? I'm sorry, do we know why it didn't go through that procedure before I came to us?
No idea.
No idea. Gary, do you have any input on it?
I don't.
Okay.
I barely looked at the plans for the boathouse at this point. You know, they're at site plan approval point, we still have to look at as the coffee shop, we still have to look at the actual plans for dismissal, for COVID compliance and that sort of thing. But yeah, I agree with you that normally that gets sent around to us. I don't believe that it did. You know, this is one of Mr. Bryson's projects that, that, you know, he's putting through the process here, and yeah, if we've skipped the point that we need to go back and make sure that we all look at it, I think that's a good idea.
Then I'll make the motion that we table this.
Well, there is a, there is a previous, I don't, I don't want to table it. Oh, let's, let's, let's get it done. There is, there is another site plan out there earlier on that dictates the whole thing, what that park's about, what the restroom's about, and we were good to go with it, except the restroom, we couldn't put it down by the water, because obviously it's non-compliant. So...
So it's, but that, so that would be a completely different site plan, because we're, we're not even talking about the restrooms being on the same site, so I, I wouldn't, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it.
We're just looking at the restroom being on Clay Township property.
Correct, but it's completely a different spot than where they were.
It has nothing to do with anything else right now. So take it as face value, there's a restroom being installed there, forget everything else.
Can't forget everything else, it's, it's part of a site plan.
So here, here's where I kind of have an issue with it, too, is because we require the public to come to us and have a certain set of standards, so are we opening ourselves to a lawsuit if we don't follow those standards as a township?
Well, we've already, we've had that, so...
I'll stand by my motion to table this, to send back for proper procedure.
What is the...
What is the what, I'm sorry?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and second, could you restate what the motion is, please?
I have a motion just to send this back for proper review from the planner and all the department heads.
The typical procedure?
Typical procedure.
Okay.
So you're staying, see, this is the first time you saw this?
No, I saw it a week or so ago, and was asked to make comments on the site plan itself, but I don't know about the others. That's all I'm saying.
When you say refer to the site, are you referring to this, is what you were asked to make a comment on when we have it on our package?
I made the comment on the location of the bathroom and that four-area parking, that's getting the handicap accessible and the walking path.
Okay.
And I found it meets your ordinance requirements.
And, I mean, I guess part of my problem with it is because on your end, is we don't have that it meets the setback required. This says, I support the request and recommend approval. So we don't know what that's based on, so we're, we're basing decisions on not having facts in front of us, so does it open the township up to legal issues? Would be my concern.
I mean, I understand, but I wouldn't recommend approval if it didn't meet the ordinance.
I understand that, but, I mean...
But I can also tell you, by state law, townships are exempt from following their own local zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Whether it's, if they follow that or not, they are.
Really?
Yes. All communities are.
Okay, we have a motion, we have support. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
No.
Mark Burchard.
No.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris, Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent, excused. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes. All right. We're going to move on to item number 6C, which is a request for rezoning of 6603 Dyke Road.
So requests from a small business on C2 district to a C3 district, we're recommending that we schedule a public hearing for the February meeting.
Which would be the same date as February 22nd, correct?
Do they have any plans, what they want to put in there, or they're just trying to develop it?
What they have indicated that there would be some kind of water-related activities.
Marina over there, something like that?
I don't think so, I think it was more, I, I don't want to speak for them, but it was more...
More of a restaurant-type?
More kayak launch type thing, that's what I thought I had heard. But whatever, if we rezone it, any of those uses could go in.
It's not limited to those uses, anything can go in.
One site plan, it showed that part of that road is part of that site, so part of the road that goes in is, one boundary indicated that part of the road was in there, too. That's all.
That would all, that would, I mean, this would only give them permission to, I mean, to proceed for a site plan approval, too.
Right.
We could see it then. There are some people across the canal, residents across the canal, that will probably have an opinion on one or the other.
Is there one house, too, on the one side, that it butts at?
Yes.
Otherwise, it's all commercial there?
It's commercial to the...
Only past Flamingo, one lot.
There is, across M29, it's zoned residential to the east, across Cardinal, there, it's zone C3, and that's automotive service. To the south of the water, across the water canal, it's R2, single-family, and west, directly adjacent to the property, is also C2, Vegan.
So we need to set a public hearing? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on 6603 Dyke Road, 74-14-199-0090-0004, rezoning from C2 to C3 to be held, they're scheduled on February 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Support.
So we have a motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, when you get the chance, a roll call, please.
Who was the support?
Chris. Yeah, that's true. Good Chris's.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes. All right, it will be set for a public hearing on the 22nd of February. Item number seven is unfinished business. The first unfinished business we hear, well, one, is On the Rocks. Steve?
Steve, if I recall right, the, you had decided to hold action on the rocks until you determine whether your ordinances are appropriate, or whether you should create a new ordinance regarding noise ordinance?
That was my understanding.
You do have a township noise ordinance, it's very general, I did attach a copy of that to you, for you, but I also did some research and provided you with a copy, what I think of a draft ordinance, which is much better, in my opinion, because it deals with specific decibels, before it kind of just says you can't disrupt, that kind of thing, very generic, but it has different decibel levels by hours, and also from residential to residential, if you go to the second page, from non-residential to residential, and from residential to non-residential. So who, who's creating the noise and how it's impacting property adjoining? And there's decibel levels, for example, if non-residential, for example, the lounge, restaurant is adjacent to residential, it could not exceed 80 decibels between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and would have to drop down to 50 decibels from 10:00 PM later. I'm not a sound engineer, but this appears to be what, seems to be appropriate in terms of what communities are asking for and that. So this is something that, you know, I propose for you to look at. It is not part of the zoning ordinance, so it's a separate ordinance that would have to be approved by the township board, and they would have to send it to you guys if they wanted you to hold a public hearing on it, or they'd hold their own public hearing. If you're deciding that this is something you find reasonable, you can obviously make changes or suggested changes, and then forward a request to the township board that they consider.
Okay. We appreciate your hard work in regards to that, because I know we've had discussion about the noise ordinance on and off for quite a while, so. Any other members have questions, comments?
The current noise ordinance, is that part of the zoning?
No.
So the current noise ordinance is not...
It's a separate ordinance, and it's on...
And I think part of the reason we were asking Steve to look into this is because On the Rocks is one of the things that's come up as far as the noise, part of the noise ordinance, but we seem to be now developing into more of a community with different restaurants and outdoor entertainment, so I don't think it's just directed, or in particular, to On the Rocks.
No.
I think it's now become something in this community that we probably should address.
The, you regulated noises out of bars, restaurants, under the standards of special land use.
Right.
Which gave you a lot of discretion, and subjected you to criticism by not being similar in all cases, even though the conditions of the site were different. And this, you can rely on specific noise standards, and if the township board adopts this, then what we can do is go back under the special land use provisions and say, in order to grant the special land use, it must be to current standards of the township's noise ordinance.
Anything that has currently been approved would stay approved as it is, or would they have to abide by the new noise ordinance?
This would be a police power ordinance, so they'd have to abide by the new ordinance.
So that means...
If it's under zoning, no.
So that means if this is a, a basic ordinance, then everybody's on the same level playing field?
Yes.
No matter who you are?
That's why it's a better, you hit it, that's why it's a better alternative.
Okay. So what would procedure be now? Would, would we recommend that the township board?
I would really suggest that you guys take a month to look at it.
Sure.
And then come back with any changes, make those changes and forward it to the township board then.
So then it gets forward to the township board, and then they can ask us if we want to hold a public hearing?
They have to determine what route they want to go. They could say they don't want the new ordinance, so they go, it's fine, or they could ask you to get involved and hold a public hearing, or they could hold their own public hearing.
Okay. Does a public hearing have to be held?
No.
Okay.
This has to be held at a public meeting.
Do we have to have a, not us in particular, somebody has to have a public hearing, or no?
No. The township board can, can review this at a public meeting, but there's no requirements that a public hearing be held, only under zoning.
Okay. For this particular?
Now, they may want to, but they're not required to.
Okay. I'm sorry, who did I interrupt? Did you have something?
I was just going to say, on the decibel, are there any provisions in there to, you say 80 decibels or 75, whatever the case may be? Is there anything in here that, or maybe we should put something in here where it has to be a certified audio specialist to measure the decibels?
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, certified technician, or whatever they call them.
Sound engineer, or whatever, something like that you're saying, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Please call me or email me with anything you want part of the next meeting, if you have anything, happy to...
I would like to not, not let this linger, sorry, losing my voice, just because we have, I know it's January, but these things sometimes get going, and then we get to the springtime when this may be more important, so I would hope everybody at the next meeting, please reach out to Steve if you have any comments, so we can be ready to take direction at the next meeting, is that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. So that takes care of that part of 7A, shall we say?
7B.
So are the 7B, yes.
7B was actually before you in the past, they came in to have a, an apartment, a second apartment, as part of the mini storage buildings. You directed them, before you could take action, to go get the ZDA approval of the second facility. My understanding is they did receive that variance at the last meeting, so now what we need to do is schedule this for a public hearing, because it's a special land use. I've been asked, is the owner of the property or business, has suggested that it be in March, the meeting be in March, because I believe it's not available in February.
I'm out of town.
Out of town, so, so we schedule for your March meeting.
Which would be March 22nd. You'll be available?
Yeah.
Okay.
I motion to schedule the public hearing for the March 22nd meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, support for a public hearing to be set for March 22nd. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
That was Deborah Addy that seconded, correct? Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel is absent. Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert.
Yes. We will have it on our March 22nd meeting for a public hearing. That should take us to item number eight, which would be the planning consultant's report.
The only item I have is I have been contacted by engineering group to do, that's looking to do a study of Harson's Island to determine the feasibility of a new bridge crossing, so that's going to be coming back to you. I informed them that I can't provide them any information, I work for the township, and that request would have to come through the township, so. That's it.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it.
Who is the engineering group?
Sheik.
Who were they, who hired them to do this?
The International Bridge Company.
The special land use, is that removing the March 22nd? Is that what we said? March 22nd, that's, you're welcome. Okay. Item number nine is ZDA representative's report, which would be W10. And I apologize, I was not at the last meeting. Usually, Sunil leaves me notes, you know, where I, that haven't been approved, but I didn't see any in there, so I apologize, I don't have any information. Is Gary, Gary, were you at the ZDA meeting?
Yes, of course. So, yeah, there, there was a few issues that were, were talked about. One was a, a addition to a garage that was added on Marina Drive that they installed without a permit, and that was, variance for that setback was denied. I did meet with that property owner yesterday, they are going to remove that building, probably within the next 30 days. And then there was also, you know, the, the mini storage that they asked for, a few variances on that, side yard setback that was approved, a lot coverage that was approved, and the second-story apartment that was approved. And that was one other. Oh, yeah, there was also, I think it was on, what street was that? Aqua Isle, there was a, a addition open porch on Aqua Isle that they were building into the unobstructed yard space, and the rear yard setback, because it's going to be open, unenclosed, that was also approved.
Well, thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number 10, which is board representatives' report.
The only thing I have is we did approve the track plan at the last meeting, and we're still waiting for the other ones to come down, such as the solar, I think that was the only other one, it's pending.
Yeah, there was a couple, was it the last meeting? Okay.
And, the, just to dwell on the bathroom one last time, the, the bathroom basically is the site plan, everything else, there's no other major construction, all it is, is grading and green, that's it. So unless you're familiar with it, and it's been floating around, I thought at one time it came for the planning commission, apparently not.
No, I don't think it does.
It's like, it's like four years old, so...
It's been around, I've heard on off and heard different, you know, accurate or inaccurate additions, but it has not, as far as I know, been before any planning commission meeting, so...
Yeah, so you're right, Chris, if, if you haven't seen it, you're not aware of it, then it's the right thing to do, so thanks for putting that forward.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Item number 11 is chairperson's report, I really don't have anything to report, other than welcome to the new year. It's been kind of quiet at the moment, so. So item number 12 is planning commission members' comments. Sounds pretty quiet still. All right, how about item number 13, public comments? Anybody in the public who'd like to come forward with any comments, please do so. Come to the podium, and please state your name and address. You might need to move the podium, not the podium, the microphone, so we can hear.
Oh, okay, sure. Mark McLennan, Inglewood Drive, 7869. Just...
Just a question on the noise ordinance, the 80 decibels, where's that measured from? Is it measured from my property line, or from the bar's edge? That's the first question. And then, I guess next, I just wonder why they haven't looked at their property differently. Their lot extends, that street extends a full lot or more beyond any residence on Inglewood. If they had their outdoor entertainment on the water's edge in the lake, and had a sound barrier up, there'd be no problem. And, and then also, too, I guess everything is relative, and names are funny, but, I mean, I don't drink, and the last place I want my boat is on the rocks, okay? I mean, to me, if I was running that place, I'd name it Sunset Point, and focus on the sunset, and they would have a draw. And maybe they say that it's too far away from your kitchen. Well, if I was working that area, and I was trying to make money, what would happen if I brought out a barbecue? Man, I'd have everyone on the lake over my place. And I just see all this problem, it's just not looking beyond the needs and opportunities that are there with the way the property is. I think eventually, if I owned that piece of property, I'd tear down the building and put it on the lake, because that's what people come for, is to see the lake. And then, if you had a little courtyard in the middle, that'd provide your outdoor entertainment, eventually. But there's lots of things you could do in the interim, like a tent by the water, sound barrier around the outside, and then, boom, no problem. As long as they're courteous and you watch the decibels. But then, like I said, in the ordinance, we've got to figure out where you measure it from. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need a new base for it?
Oh, yes, a new base for it. Let's say there's a dispute, and I say, it's too dang loud, who pays to have that sound checked? Are you going to take my phone? Okay, so I put that little app on for sound check, and I'm, I'm reading 102, wouldn't that be enough to trigger a professional to come out, or is it my expense to go get a professional to come out? There, there needs to be some, some mitigation there. Eventually, the business needs to pay for it, because they exist in the neighborhood at, at, at our behest, and the neighbors have to be first, have to be. Otherwise, none of us, none of us have a place to live, right? And there should be a provision there to, to, to take a casual reading, and then document that later, and it should be at the business expense. That's a further incentive that they would have to keep the noise down. And then, to top it off, if I go out to eat, do I want my ears blasted? No, I want to enjoy good mu, music, I want to have decent background music, and if I want to dance with my wife, so be it, but, but I don't need 160 decibels like I did when I was a kid, so.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. We'll take those into consideration. Any other public comments? One more time, anybody else have a public comment? I don't see any hands raised, or anybody coming forward, so I will move on to item number 14, which would be the end judgment.
So moved.
Motion by Chris. Second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.